It's hard to fathom.
What, you just looked at still?
Yeah. I didn't actually see it, I swear.
I did, mate.
Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Jack McConnell, Director of Grace House. In his absence, I'm going to ask Councilman Seaver to give us the invocation.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we'd like to thank you at this time for all the many blessings you bestowed upon us, each and every one of us. We don't have to look far to see some of the blessings that you provide. Be with us this night, impart some of your divine wisdom to us so we can make the decisions that best fit your people. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no special presentations. Do we have any persons requesting to be heard? Motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Gess, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous and all members are present. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is carried unanimously. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor? I would like, I've got a question on I, approval of contract with Varo Incorporated, and would like to see some additional proposals on that.
Okay, let me leave that out for now.
Okay.
And we have a motion to approve that I.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item I.
I'll second.
Motion by Misner, second by Layle. Mr. Berry, item I.
Item I is a contract valued at $367,114.50 for data center upgrades to the city's network. And in your agenda, it kind of lays out the specifics of some of the network equipment, including switches and SAN drive, which is your backup for your overall network and the virtual desktop that we put in the library a couple of years ago. Basically, it's the backbone infrastructure of our communications or data network throughout the city. And the company, Varo, was one of two that presented proposals to the city of Hickory. And Varo is actually an implementer, a reseller, and the technology is actually from EMC, which is a national corporation. And I'll be glad to answer any questions or call on appropriate staff to discuss in further detail.
Is Varo located locally, or?
I believe they're out of Charlotte. Is that right?
And the other proposal was by?
Catalyst. Who was it?
Catalyst.
Catalyst. And that's in your agenda packet. You've got both, the information for both of the bids that the city received. This is a budgeted item. It's something we've been planning for, for about nine months. We had a lot of discussion and conversation in the budget process about that. Obviously, being early in the fiscal year, it's something we felt like we wanted to get after pretty quickly to get implementation. And so, right as soon as the budget was adopted, went forward with soliciting proposals and bids.
How did we advertise? Did we advertise this the way we always advertise requests for proposals?
In general terms, Yap are the city's purchasing agent, handles that, Bo does, puts it out as an RFP. As typically happens in technology purchases, you have implementers and resellers who actually will quote you other products. Things that people might understand the most is Microsoft might be a solution, but you've got a third-party company that comes in and does the install, the implementation, all that kind of stuff. And that's the case with Varo, is they're a, in effect, an implementer of the technology that we've selected. And again, we can get into a lot of detail of whatever council would like to discuss. Mike Woods, the city's IT director, is here. We can go in a lot more detail than I can about it.
You know, when this came through budget, I called up there, because, I mean, it's budgeted $467,000 for capital for IT. And I was like, what is going on with technology? And they explained, a lot of, to me, a lot of it I didn't understand. But I was confident after, I don't know, we had maybe two or three meetings, that I was confident after two or three meetings that, you know, it's a legitimate and somewhat urgent need. I mean, if you think about it, we, you know, let's take our customers' water bills.
Okay.
And we've got all that, all that customer data. And, you know, it's not in any risk right now, but what you do is you take that data and this system will allow it to mirror in a separate location all that data. So we couldn't have a catastrophe, a failure. We have a backup. And that's, that's sort of one way, I think, that I had to look at. And to put those systems in place, you know, it's just expensive.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we weren't backed up before?
No, no, we're backed up, yeah. This allows, from what I understand, an instant, sort of, you know, a ghost drive or something.
Yep. And the backup equipment that we are replacing is several years old, just like all technology and even vehicles and things, we all understand. Over time, those companies quit supporting your older versions, so if you have a SAN, which is a replaceable drive fail, it's almost impossible to get a replacement for it. It just, you know, starts becoming obsolete technology. So we have been running backups, but we were very concerned about that system that does the backup.
So how long do you think this will last before we have to do this kind of thing again?
Yeah, you always look at five- to seven-year window for technology, so you kind of look at the total cost of ownership and the life cycle of how long will this last. The good news is that, in general terms, the technology tends to get cheaper. This type of a system was probably over half a million dollars when we originally bought it six, seven years ago, so it's come down. What we end up replacing with five years ago may be completely a service hosted in the cloud somewhere. I mean, it's always an evolving solution and fortunately gets cheaper. I do want to put in a plug and an explanation for a project that may not have gotten a lot of attention, but was done about two years ago, where we basically replaced all of the desktop computers at the library with virtual machines. So instead of there being a PC sitting there at every single desk, you have basically what's called a thin client, which is a very scaled-down PC, very inexpensive, and then all the data resides, resides on the network and you just are going back and forth. So it's kind of like you've built this little mini-internet where everything is on the servers, back and forth. And what that did was it drove down our cost for replacing those desktop computers every three or four, five years, because now, instead of having a couple thousand-dollar computer, you've got a couple hundred-dollar virtual desktop sitting there. But the trade-off is it put more burden on our backbone system of all the networks and servers to hold that data with the entire library net being on there.
So we're now in the 21st century. We're up to date, right?
Yep. We won't be tomorrow, but we will be today.
The plan is in five years to run it off Mick's cellphone.
And Mick will be riding a drone and he'll be up there with the cloud, right there, worried that.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
I'd move approval of item I.
Second. Motion by Layle, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, the clerk just handed me a note and said she didn't actually record that you all voted on the remaining consent agenda items after you removed that item I.
It was motion by Misner, second by Layle.
The vote was.
We didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't vote. Oh, we didn't actually vote.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. You all going to keep me straight? Okay. Are we at new business?
First item of new business this evening, you have a series of public hearings. In the first one, I'll call on the city's Public Services Director, Mr. Chuck Hanson, to present a resolution that confirms the levy of an assessment along a portion of 8th Street Drive Northwest. It's a single resident petition that is already being constructed. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor, members of council, that's exactly what this is. This is the resolution requesting the approval of the preliminary assessment role to essentially bill the property owner for the construction of the curb and gutter. This is for our curb and gutter petition 1-14. It's a single property petition. The work was completed in June and the amount is $4,894.13. So this is part of the normal process that we have to go through for an assessment process, which, again, this was a voluntary petition coming from the property owner.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Hanson. We will now open the public hearing. And the way the public hearing works is we allow 15 minutes for those speaking who want to speak against a proposal and then rebuttal, and then 15 minutes for those who wish to speak for a proposal. Then we allow five minutes for rebuttal by each side. With that, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if anyone would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I would, I'll close the public hearing and ask for motion or discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Layle. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Second public hearing this evening is considered rezoning petition of property located at 1218 Bugle Lane in Newton. And just to clarify, the post offices addresses do not coincide with city limits, so obviously this is in the city of Hickory, however, has a Newton address. This is a piece of residential property which was voluntarily petitioned and accepted by the city to be annexed last month, and now, consistent with policy, needs to be rezoned from county residential to city residential. And I'll ask Mr. Cal Overbee, the city's principal planner, to present the item to council.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
Myself.
Mayor Wright, and Miss Councilman Crone. The item before you is rezoning petition 1401. Again, this is application by the city of Hickory. The property, again, is located at 1218 Bugle Lane. This does have a Newton address, as Mr. Berry stated. Post offices don't exactly go by the cities as far as their addresses are concerned. There is, the request is to basically zone the property from Catawba County R20 zoning, which is single-family residential zoning, to city of Hickory R1 zoning, which is single-family residential zoning. With regards to the piece of property, the property outline in red is the subject property. As you can see, this is basically Fox Chase subdivision, just in Bugle Lane here. It's made up entirely of single-family residences with some open wooded and forest area to the rear there. With regards to the existing zones, you can see the areas in yellow depict the properties inside the city of Hickory and the areas in orange depict the areas inside of Catawba County. Again, all the zoning, regardless of Catawba County zoning or city of Hickory zoning, is single-family residential. With regards to our comprehensive plan, our Hickory Road Choice 2030 comprehensive plan, the subject property is basically in this area here, and the recommendations are all for low-density residential, which the property resides on about a half acre property, so this is a fall into definition of low-density residential. The Plan Commission reviewed this on June 25th and found the petition to consist of our comprehensive plan and recommend the city council approval. Staff agrees with findings and recommendations of the Plan Commission, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Misner.
Second.
Second by Ms. Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Your third public hearing, I'll call on Captain Thurman Wisniewicz of the Hickory Police Department to present an ordinance for your consideration relative to ABC permits and the local opinion ordinance related to that.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Crone. I'll be very brief tonight. Just to give you a little background of what this is, we at the police department are tasked, whenever a business or an applicant applies for an ABC permit, the first step in the process is they have to acquire a local opinion form from planning, which then is routed to the police department. And we do a call-for-service history on the proposed location and also are tasked with giving an opinion as to the suitability of the applicant or the owners of the establishment. For years and years, we've been able to use our system that we use for criminal histories, which is through the State Bureau of Investigations Division of Criminal Information. We're audited every year. We're required to keep fairly strict logs. This past year, we, along with all the other municipalities in North Carolina, were told that in order to continue to have the authority to do that, to be able to use that for a non-criminal purpose, we would have to have the ordinance which is before you. So this is, in essence, for us to be able to continue to do what we've always done. And with that, I'll take questions. Thank you.
I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Gess, second by Zaga Rowley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
The next two public hearings are, of course, related to one another and are the next legally required steps in the process that council has been engaged with for several months now for the issuance of general obligation bonds. Specifically this evening, per statute, the city has advertised and needs to hold a public hearing relative to both the general obligation bond order for $25 million for street and sidewalk improvements. Specifically, on page 395 of your agenda packet, is the resolution involved, and I won't read it entirely, but the highlights are that the city finds, in order to raise money sufficient for streets and sidewalks, facilities described, et cetera, that you have authorized and issued a local government, excuse me, you've applied to the Local Government Commission and are following the Local Government Fiscal Finance Act of North Carolina, that you will levy taxes sufficient to pay the principal and the interest on the general obligation street and sidewalk bonds when due, that a sworn statement of the city's debt has been filed with the city clerk and is open for public inspection, and that this bond order shall take effect when approved by the city voters of the city. Let me clarify that, at a referendum scheduled for November 4th, 2015. So that is the resolution that requires the public hearing this evening.
I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Patton.
And that's a motion to approve and adopt the resolution as it appears on page 395 of the agenda.
Motion by Patton, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
So the next public hearing is basically the sister of the last one, which is to adopt the same resolution relative to $15 million of bonds for economic development. And again, the resolution outlines the uses of the $15 million and that taxes will be sufficient to pay principal and interest. The sworn statement of the city's debt has been filed with the city clerk and is open to public inspection, and that the bond order shall take effect when approved by voters of the city at a referendum scheduled for November 4th, 2014.
I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal.
290-3.
Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
I'll move approval of the bond order.
Motion by Seaver.
Second.
Second by Layle. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
And although not a public hearing, the next item on your agenda continues the process, and that is a resolution setting a special bond referendum and directing the publication of a notice of a special bond referendum and notification of the Catawba County Board of Elections. So here is the resolution for council's consideration, which, again, lays out the language that will be on the ballot, the issuance of $25 million in general obligation street and sidewalk bonds for the city of Hickory, North Carolina, and a bond order authorizing the issuance of $15 million general obligation economic development bonds for the city of Hickory, North Carolina. Again, you state the purposes for which you intend to borrow these funds, street, sidewalks, et cetera, economic development. The city clerk is authorized and directed to publish a notice of the said referendum, which shall be in substantially the same form as city of Hickory, North Carolina notice of special bond referendum, which is attached, that the county board of elections is hereby requested to print and distribute the necessary ballots and to provide the equipment for the holding of said referendum and conduct and to supervise said referendum. The ballot will be used, again, said referendum shall contain the following words, so at the bottom of page 401 of the resolution, you actually have the language that's involved, the question in effect that's involved for both the $25 million street and sidewalks and the $15 million economic development. And then, of course, it states that a square will be labeled yes or no beneath or beside such words, so that people can cast their votes. And then, lastly, that the city clerk shall mail or deliver a certified copy of this resolution to the Catawba County Board of Elections within three days after this resolution is adopted. And, of course, we've already been in verbal communication with the Catawba County Board of Elections to notify them that this will be forthcoming, and they are already prepared to take care of that.
Okay, now, of course, all of this is subject to approval of Local Government Commission.
Correct. You filed that application and that process continues to move forward.
And today, we had a meeting of Local Government Commission, and I participated by phone, and it was a very interesting meeting where we talked about some bond issues and debt issues, and they asked some tough questions, some interesting questions, and, in fact, tabled one for short, for 60 days. So I will not be speaking on behalf of ours or voting on ours, but I have a feeling that ours is going to be favorably received.
Nor could we afford a 60-day table.
No, we couldn't. We're pretty much on the timeline.
Well, I think this is only the second time they've ever, they've ever tabled Do we have any questions or discussion or a motion?
Move approval of resolution?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. We've gone through a lot of agenda here, huh? And I would suggest that perhaps we have county funds spent and committed based on, albeit subject to voter approval, this is probably an all-time record meeting for the city of Hickory. Next item.
The next item, I'll call on Assistant City Manager Andrea Surratt to present to council and discuss a application which, let me give you just a little bit of background and not to be redundant with what Ms. Surratt's going to get into, but the Hickory Housing Authority approached the city just a little over a month ago on June 30th and inquired about the city applying to federal HUD for what's known as a Choice Neighborhoods Planning Grant. And that was the first that city staff had heard of the grant, and we were certainly interested in finding out more about that and what it entailed. As with most all federal grants and certainly HUD programs, they're very complex, a lot of information required in the grant, and we felt it appropriate to have a good vetting and discussion of that this evening with council, because we knew this was going to be something you were hearing for the first time, most of you, as it was for us about a month ago. So, sorry, you didn't have to, no. So Ms. Surratt can give you all the details and answer a lot of questions.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. I come before you tonight just to present to you this grant opportunity, which we're very excited about, working with the Hickory Housing Authority, and also to explain to you in a lot of detail, well, short detail, what the grant is about and how we can move forward together in partnership. So this is a federal grant issued through HUD. It's called Choice Neighborhoods. And there are two aspects to the grant. The grant includes planning dollars. So many cities go after the first round of grants, which is for planning dollars, and then the second wave of the grant, which would come potentially later for some cities, is an implementation grant, so funds to actually do construction and renovation. But the federal government set up, through HUD, set up this program for Choice Neighborhoods. It's a, it's a program designed to address the deficiencies of public housing and make sure that those distressed areas then can receive, you know, some outfit or some renovation or actually some new construction for the housing. And then, the residents who live in that housing, in those neighborhoods, then can participate in, living in the same location, a similar location, or choose where they would like to be. So it's a big program for any city, and it's a big one for Hickory. So Choice Neighborhoods then focuses first on addressing the structures, the housing that's offered, how, the program assesses, requires an assessment, an inventory really of the housing stock. It then talks about, you know, the populations, what are some opportunities to make sure that people in those neighborhoods have access to services? So, and how can those, how can the public housing be placed in such a way and dispersed in such a way, even with market rate housing mixed in, to provide a stronger neighborhood? And as a result, the third category of focus is strengthening the neighborhoods themselves. So there's, there's a HOPE 6 project, and I don't, I don't know enough about all of this yet, I'm still learning some of this, but there are a lot of opportunities to strengthen the neighborhoods as a result of this planning grant and then the implementation grant. And so the first step for many communities is the Transformation Plan. That's the larger plan to think about revitalizing neighborhoods with public housing, renovating and replacing housing units, and then potentially facilitating some great opportunities for the families that live there. The NOFA, the Notice of Funding Availability, came out just earlier this summer with an August 12th deadline for the grant, for the planning grant. And so what we, we were approached by the Hickory Housing Authority very hopefully and optimistically, and we were excited about working with them. That timetable is fairly short for this summer, but we do see a partnership on the horizon. So just some details about that. Let's see, there's, there's $5 million available, and these are, this is a national competition. HUD expects to make approximately 10 awards. The threshold or the ceiling for the grant, for the planning grant, is half a million, and the discussions we've and the discussions we've had with Hickory Housing Authority and with consultant is that really $400,000 is a good target to apply for. It's a 21-month process, so once the grant is awarded, it would take approximately two years to go through that planning process. So it's a grant to do the plan, and then another grant, another application down the road for construction and renovation. Stop me at any point.
Can we leave that one there for a second?
Yes.
When is the next application deadline?
Right. So it has been identified to happen in the next fiscal year. We just haven't received the, the funding hasn't been appropriated yet because it's tied to the new federal budget cycle, so.
The next fiscal year?
This time next year, this time next year is our.
After June 30th of 2014?
Yes, sir. It's our, you know, it's our anticipation that the grant comes back around again, is what we've been told.
And this involves a match, I understand.
A small match. It's 95% federal, 5% local match, and Hickory Housing Authority has said in our conversations that that match is something they're comfortable with. So that's, we would then be working on providing some support services to get the application written and helping coordinate a public process for informing the community, getting ideas, things like that.
Well, August 12th is.
That's next, I don't know, Tuesday.
Once you get the planning grant, are you automatic to get the implementation grant?
Not, my understanding is no, it's a separate, it probably puts you higher in the list of choices for cities, but yes, no, you're not allowed, you're not guaranteed.
Do you know how many are going to actually be applying? Is there a?
Well, we, I haven't been in touch with HUD. We can ask that question, and we can know more about it in the coming weeks about who does apply, but it is national. And so there are other cities in North Carolina that have received them. Wilson is one. There are several communities across the state, but I don't know exactly who's applying right now.
So Wilson received one in a previous year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Now, is it the kind of thing that we are assured that at some point we're going to get this because it is a complete overhaul of the system? And is it a mandate that we will overhaul our system that way?
Yeah, I'm not versed in it enough to speak to that. I really think we'd probably want to have Alonda Jackson or someone from the Housing Authority speak to it or give us some chance to research that a little more thoroughly. My understanding is the program itself nationally is an attempt to address and improve the way public housing is implemented across the country. Whether or not they're going to do that, all right now with these two grants, I'm not sure that's practical, but I think over time, the goal is to transform public housing from, you know, one pod, one current site to a number of smaller sites and have the services provided to those residents be improved and be available. Yes, sir.
Would you object if we vote to allow Dr. Miles to speak?
Oh, I'd love for, I'd love for, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that Dr. Miles, who is chairman of the Hickory Housing Authority, be allowed to come forward and assist in this presentation.
Okay, great. And I'll sit down and come back up in a minute.
Second. Second by Mr. Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Thank you, Dr. Miles.
Good afternoon. I wasn't expected to come up here and present, but I was reminded that this is my first council meeting, and thank you for allowing us to be here. Let me just kind of give a quick overview. When you talked about, is it mandated? Yes, mandated. What's happening with public housing is, public housing will not exist anymore, okay? It is going pretty much private. And so what we're trying to do is be on the cutting edge of taking Hickory into the 21st century when it comes down to housing. Before, there was times where individuals can apply for housing and pretty much stay there. That won't happen anymore. And so we're trying to identify problems that is holding our neighbors, our, you know, members back and see what we can do with it. Now, how is the city involved? Through multiple series of meetings, and the last one being recently, we was in Litchfield, South Carolina, at a retreat, we're learning how other cities, Atlanta, there's no public housing. They're totally private. Now, Atlanta started years ago. They saw the writing on the wall. And so where public housing, and you see it in the federal government, they're going to fund it to a degree, but nowhere near where it was funded before. Now, what does that mean for cities? Well, everything is going to choice vouchers. So you got X amount of vouchers. Now, what they're going to do for individuals who qualify for those vouchers, they're going to get it to them, and they can go anywhere, anywhere. So if we don't bring our houses up to code and up to standard, they can leave Hickory. And what leaves Hickory is also a tax base. Now, if we don't do it right, they got others that will do it, and they're not from Hickory. They don't care about Hickory. So we kind of take this to heart, what's going on. We've applied for a $32 million RAD program to transform all the housing. So not only bringing it up to code, we're talking about tearing down every housing structure and building affordable housing, not projects. I think I talked with you earlier today, Mayor, and talked about, I don't know if you guys have been watching news, about the poor door, luxury condominiums in New York, and how, you know, affordable housing is actually in there. And that's because they got some of the federal money. So they want neighborhoods, and when they talk about choice neighborhoods, they want individuals to have the same focus of schools, you know, grocery stores, like all of us want in neighborhoods. And so when this grant came about, we thought, hey, this is the way we kick it off, so to speak. The matching grants, we're talking about putting up about $100,000 in the city. We want about $100,000. And so the total will be $600,000. The money will come to the city, and we're talking about revitalizing some of the neighborhoods. But it's a scary thought. I didn't think I was going to do this. I'm a physician, you know, but I can see it in medicine, too. The exact same thing is going on, so I see the parallel. And so I think we're kind of walking through this. We got some excellent consultants that is walking us through this so that we make sure we don't hit landmines and, you know, do something wrong. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to get in line. One thing that I'm kind of, you know, excited about is no one in Western Carolina has gotten grants, so why not us? So that's kind of where we're going, and this is a work in progress. We're all trying to learn and trying to, this is new. The federal government, it's almost an experiment. It's almost a, not necessarily experiment, but they want to see, they're trying to save money the best they can. So that's kind of where we're going with this, okay? We got individuals, and we're, again, identifying in the housing what's holding individuals back. So, hey, if you need daycare, we're helping out with that. For individuals who may have felony charges, we got legal aid who's helping, especially if they've been in stand-up. They did something 15 years ago, but they can't get a job, so they're helping them with that. Individuals who didn't graduate from high school, don't have their GED, we're trying to get them educated. We just graduated life skill class last Friday. You know, I was like, I got patience, see, I can't get there. But I tell you what, it was very enlightening, and you could see these individuals that, you know, when we first brought it to the residents, there was a lot of, we don't understand, we're scared. But now they're excited, and so we just want to keep the enthusiasm going and, you know, get in line and get what's due to us as well.
Is there a timeframe of this whole transformation?
Well, our RAD application is, I think we have two or three-year program, two-year program. And so the staff is, whoo, they're working. And we partner not with, not only consultants, but a group out of Atlanta, because they showed them how to do it.
Is there any chance that some of the residents are, let's say, we get angry from council because we participate in this in the limited way we're asked to, and we're fast-tracking them to have to change things that maybe they're not ready to change?
Well, I mean, you're going to get some resistance, but overall, I mean, individuals want to be independent. No one wants to depend on others. And when you're giving them that opportunity, you know, they're saying, hey, yeah, I do want to step up to the plate. And so that's what we're trying to do, is provide opportunity, because there won't be the funding that was there before. And as we transform, so you say, well, what happens to funding? Well, we're moving into a nonprofit, and so we're allowed to now generate revenue. With the building, how is that going to be funded? Well, we're going to be able to offer tax credits. So you offer tax credits to ExxonMobil for 15 years, well, here's $5 million to get your project going. We want the 15-year tax credit. I didn't know anything about this, and I'm learning, and I'm like, wow. And so you're seeing in South Carolina, you're seeing in Georgia, you're seeing all over the country that this is happening all over. And we kind of felt that, once we had the consultants come in and explain to us, wow, we're kind of behind. We need to step up and go do it. So that's kind of the overview, you know, as this thing evolved.
Is there a plan B if we don't get the grant? What happens if we don't get the grant?
Well, this grant is, this is just a start. This is, hey, we got an opportunity to apply for, so this grant, if we don't get it, we don't get it.
Right.
You know, but it's something we can write for, because right now, our progress is still going. And so right now, we got on the table, we're looking at two properties that we want to obtain, the Housing Authority, tear them down and build houses. And so, and again, that's what some of the consultants, when they moved authority into this direction, they kind of started giving us ideas that you can do, you know, staying very legal, staying within the parameters of the laws and of the rules, but we got to move.
These vouchers.
Yes, sir.
And I'm trying to understand how this would work. I mean, do they come in and say, everybody who's in public housing now gets a voucher?
You still have to qualify yearly for those vouchers. So it depends on your income and ratio, so not everyone right now says, yes, you're going to get a voucher. No, I can't say that. What I can say is that we're, I think, 305 vouchers or something like that, and we want to grow to about 750. And again, and the reason, the consultants, that's a number that we're trying to strive for, because we don't get gobbled up, so to speak. But the housing that we're looking at overall, I mean, we literally want to tear down every structure, building one, you know, unit at a time, so to speak, and making them affordable for everyone. So this competition is going to be not just for, you know, low income, it's going to be for everyone. We took a, we did a retreat in Atlanta just to see what it looks like. And within one of the structures, what we saw, and I think this was the CAD, if I remember correctly, you saw elderly housing, you saw apartments, you saw condominiums, you saw $300,000 townhouses, you saw $500,000 homes superimposed with grocery stores and, you know, and pharmacies, and schools, and you're like, whoa, this is what they're looking at. That's the model. And so to concentrate in an area can't be that way. And so now, that means that everyone has a responsibility, and we're taking it upon us to make sure that what's holding you back, what can we do? Now, that makes Hickory a pretty good city. Hey, I want to live in Hickory, you know? And so that's kind of what we're looking at. It's scary. Again, I'm a physician, I didn't sign up for this.
But let me ask you, isn't everybody in Hickory who is voucher eligible?
Yes, sir.
Aren't they already in public housing or on Section 8?
Well, on Section 8, you don't necessarily have to be in public housing, because those vouchers go anywhere. So they can go into private houses that someone takes it, and that's where it's all going.
So it's just a dispersment, really, of the concentration, so.
Right.
Everyone gets the benefit of living wherever they want.
Correct.
This first grant cycle thing, you're two years, you've got to have your plan together to do all this change.
No, this grant is just going to do, this is more of a planning grant, if I remember correctly.
Oh, to the end.
And then we get the implementation grant thereafter. But this is kicking us off. I mean, we've set up the structures, and so our thing is then how do we get the structure going? And when this came down the pipe, I'm like, oh, this is perfect. This is how we get the structure going.
So then the implementation, how long do you foresee that would take to tear down all this public housing and replace with?
Well, we're, we already submitted our plan to HUD. We submitted it December of last year, and for the RAD money, and which I think, I say again, about $32 million that we applied for. Now, will we get it? We don't know. But in the process, as our consultant told us, you guys just can't wait for that to come. You got to be moving, and that's what we're trying to do.
When do you think you'll hear some results from that? It's been a while already.
It's been a while, because they did the first release of funds, actually, December of 2012, if I remember correctly. That's when they started releasing. So I think when they start getting data back, and I heard you talking about the, you know, the backups and the cloud and everything, trust me, I know, I just built a whole new server in my office and stuff. But once they start seeing the data and seeing the savings, that's when they're going to, so they kicked out a round of money already and saying, okay, let's sit back and let's look at the data. So I think that's where we are. We're going to have to wait for, it may be after administration change, we don't know.
As people, they get the vouchers, and then you're working with them to get their income up, to get them off of public housing.
Yes, sir. We're, our goal is no public housing in Hickory.
Who's going to take the unit that they vacate?
Sir?
Who will take the unit that they vacate?
Well, there's going to be individuals that's always trying to flow through, that's kind of trying to get up and get going. So, but our goal is there will be no public housing.
Okay.
Whether we do it or someone else.
Well, but look at it from my standpoint, and I'm, if you don't realize it, I'm pretty blunt. Here we are, we're talking about a vote, because it's the Hickory Housing Authority, we're talking about a vote on your commitment of about 5% of $400,000.
Mm-hmm.
A commitment of $20,000, and we're voting on it tonight.
We're putting up $100,000.
In the meantime, you have out there a request for $32 million, and we didn't know about it. I'm not saying that you had to tell us, I just don't know.
But yeah, the RAD program is a monster right now. I mean, we're all trying to, it evolved, and we're trying to get our hands around it. But we're trying to make sure that at least the Housing Authority for Hickory, North Carolina, we're providing the best, safe, opportunistic housing that we can. And I think that gives everyone a chance.
Well, and I will say, I think you always have.
You know, it's funny, because one of, I had a resident say, Dr. Miles, you don't understand. I said, my parents lived in housing. I do understand.
Steve, I grew up in housing.
He did.
So we, okay, do anybody have any further questions of Dr. Miles or?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You did a real good job for not being presented.
That's right.
Is this subject to a second reading?
No, it's not. I mean, it's, you know, we always bring grant applications to you all. Typically, we put them on consent agenda because we're basically just notifying you and the public, we're going to pursue a grant. You don't know if you're going to get them or not. But given the scope of this one and given that it was brand-new to us as staff and brand-new to you all as council, we felt like, hey, we need to have a discussion about it so y'all understand what it's about, how it works. But no, Mr. Mayor, it wouldn't require a second reading. And it couldn't. I mean, we have to have the application in by next week, as Ms. Surratt said.
Is that doable?
Pretty much. We do have, the Housing Authority has, it's the Housing Authority that enlisted the help of a national consulting group that we were aware of, too, and as Dr. Miles mentioned, they're working on it right now. I mean, it's an online kind of thing, they're typing stuff in and doing the verbiage and... an online kind of thing. They're typing stuff in and doing the, doing the verbiage and drag down statistics from the COGS, COG, and all that kind of stuff to put the application. It's a hundred and some odd page document that's got to get done, so.
Well, from what I've read, just not a whole lot about it, but that this is the wave of the future, is to disperse the concentration when you have issues facing crime, all the issues with public housing that they do have, is to disperse it. And children have opportunity to see another lifestyle. And it's a mixture of everyone rather than concentrations. And it's a very good.
I'll tell you what, if I lived somewhere I had to go in a poor door, I would not have a very good impression of that place.
I would.
If I lived in somewhere I had to go into poor door, you know, you understand?
Mm-hmm.
That's what they have, poor doors.
Yeah.
I sure hope we never have any poor doors in Hickory. But I hear you. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, completing this grant application, but that we have a extensive, Mr. Pope, there's not a public hearing.
I understand that, Mayor, but what I would like to say is, I think it's very important before you make or take a vote on this, I will tell you that I have been at a lot of meetings where this was discussed by Mrs. Jackson. And there are questions that she cannot answer that have not been raised tonight, because what you don't know is, if they go to this program, then the residents are going to be responsible.
Mr. Pope, you had an opportunity, you had an opportunity to speak earlier, you chose not to. You're out of order, you're out of order, and I'm going to have to ask you not to speak.
You can ask me not to speak.
I'm asking you not to speak. I'm asking you not to speak.
Because you need to know the important facts that you have not been made aware of with this program. What's going to happen to residents that cannot pay their utilities or are, and are evicted? Where are they going to live?
I make a motion to declare Mr. Pope out of order.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, no. Mr. Shil, you're out of order.
I apologize.
You're out of order. Mr. Pope, you're going to have to take your seat, or we're going to have to ask you to leave the room.
You can ask me to do anything you want, Mr. Mayor. It's not necessarily mean that I'm going to do it. I know what my rights are. And I've got a right to be. This is a public building that my tax dollars paid for and built.
You've made the motion for.
So I made the motion that we approve this.
And I will second that.
And we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. But I would like to have, before our next meeting, a comprehensive public meeting on this subject, and what it means to the country as, as a whole, like, who's getting in line first, and who's getting in line last, and what does all of this mean, and, and how do you interject another layer of profit into a system and yet save money? Okay? And then, what it means to Hickory, and why Hickory, why it's a good thing for Hickory to be behind us. I'm making that as a request.
Yeah, I understand. We'll, we'll do the best we can, Mayor, as, as Ms. Ress said.
Well, we need to get Dr. Miles and some of those folks to be on top of this.
We'll have to tap a lot of the resources of the consultants and the Housing Authority.
So we can, we can bring consultants?
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Or one of the, presenting.
So we'll, we'll try to put together a workshop or something where they can come in and, you know, and have a good discussion and understand. It'd be good for us, too. We're trying to learn and understand how all this works.
Okay, Park 1764 option paid.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next department report, as you all know, the County Commissioners approved the zoning of approximately 178 acres, which we've been working on for several years as a Class A business park titled 1764, which ties it to the original land grant to the family. As that final, or that next step of the County Commissioner's approval has been cleared, per the option agreements that the Economic Development Corporation of Catawba County has with each of the property owners, we have now triggered the next phase of the options, which is where the county and the city come together to fund the options. And so this evening, what I have before you is a, a budget amendment requesting that you move $103,189 from general fund contingency into the economic development line items so that the city can provide 50% of the option funding for the 178 acres. Just to give you a brief review of how the options are structured, the Economic Development Corporation, through these option contracts, will tie up that 178 acres for seven years. This payment and all other future option payments are applied to the purchase of the property. Ultimately, the options will come in at a total of $388,000. And on page 407 of your agenda packet is a memo that lays, lays that out. So ultimately, the city's share is $194,050. So you're taking a little over half of that today at $103,189. And the intent is, is that with the control of the property through these options, that the Economic Development Corporation now can go out and can actually market the property to companies, either local companies wishing to expand or attracting new companies here, obviously, to generate job growth and tax base, and have a defined business park. A lot of discussion, obviously, about that during the county rezoning process. And the options, the actual purchase agreements that the options relate to stipulate that the property, of course, has to be annexed by the City of Hickory. And you all already have major utilities all around that property. That's part of what made it so attractive for economic development, as you've already invested about $8 million in a sewer line and millions of dollars in, over the years, in water lines that can serve the property. So that's, that's a summary of where we are. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have about that. Oh, and the payment is due, I'm sorry, the payment is actually due from the Economic Development Corporation next week. The options were entered into in April, had a timeframe of July 11th to get through the rezoning and to get through the environmental assessment and some of the other preliminary work before any payments were going to be made. Mr. Millar, per the agreements, was asked for and was granted another 30-day extension to meet the timeframe of the county rezoning process. And so that kicked him into August 11th to be the time due. And so, so we need action this evening in order for him to meet that obligation.
I make a motion, we approve this payment.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Wright, second by Gess. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Your final department report from staff. I'll ask Mr. Warren Wood, the city's Chief Financial Officer and Assistant City Manager, to come to the podium and provide you with his quarterly financial report.
Mayor Wright, members of City Council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, we have completed the previous fiscal year, although there's still some activity that takes place. We paid bills from the previous fiscal year in July. We're still receiving sales tax revenue through the middle of August. So that, these numbers will be as of June 30th, 2014. But just keep in mind, there's some additional activity that takes place after the fiscal year actually ends. So, starting with the general fund, general fund is a $45 million fund. That's about half of your financial, annual financial activity. With 100% of the year complete, keep it in mind, there's still some additional activity beyond that. This is good news. We've received almost 94% of our budgeted revenues. The five-year average says we'll be about 91%. That's the best that number has been in six years. That is good. And you're going to see a theme that parallels that as we, as we go through this finance report. So on the revenue side, that's, that's good news. The expenditure side, we have spent or encumbered about 93%. That's about where our five-year average says we should be. So when you take the encumbrances out and just look at your revenues of expenditures in the general fund, we have received $1.4 million more than we have spent. The five-year average says we should be in the hole, so to speak, by $364,000. One thing to keep in mind with this number included in that is the infamous ladder truck that was budgeted for the previous fiscal year but wasn't spent. So there's about $890,000 that really, from a truthful perspective, should come off that $1.4 million, because you just re-appropriated that, a lot of that, tonight. Does that make sense? So you're really looking at about $560,000 to the good. But that's a good year. Again, best number we've had in, in the last six years. Water and Sewer Fund, we've received about 94%. Five-year average says we'd be at about 95% on revenue side. The expenditure side, we were meeting our five-year average at about, about 91 or 92%. The bottom line in the Water and Sewer Fund is we have received $1.4 million more than we have spent. The five-year, the five-year average says we ought to be at about $1.2 million. So a good year in the Water and Sewer Fund. And the Water and Sewer Fund has fared well the last, through this most recent downturn. That's about, the Water and Sewer Fund makes up about 25% of your overall annual financial activity. So, good year, the previous fiscal year. Okay, I'm going to prepare you for this. The next four slides are going to be positive. And that'll be the first time we've had four consecutive, although moderately positive, slides in a row in the last six years. So again, just, we'll start with property tax collection rate by fiscal year. I'm not used to not being the grim reaper at my, at my quarterly financial reports for the last six years.
And the only difference that I can think of is Zagorowley's on board.
Well, things have turned around.
I can't think of anything else.
Yeah. Property tax collection rate by fiscal year, interestingly, over the, we had basically nine years in a row where the city's property tax collection rate dropped, very incrementally, but dropped. Hit the bottom here in FY 1112. But look what's happened the last two years. And I think that's an indication, to some degree, of people's ability to pay. So we've had, pay their property taxes. So we've had a two, two consecutive years of an increase in our property tax collection rate. That's, that's a good sign. I think that's, that's positive. This is a little bit hard to see, I apologize. This is our total property tax base going back to 2005 through, to date. You can see, obviously, with the real estate market, what it was doing in '06, '07, and for part of '08, a lot of increase. And we were still riding that wave through the first couple of years of the most recent recession. And then we dropped in value by about, I think it was about 1.8% over a two-year period. We actually saw 1.6% growth in our property tax base this past year, which is better than what we thought it was going to be when we did the budget. But it came in at about 1. We'd like for it to be double that. That would be a good number. But we will take a positive 1.6% versus a negative 1.8%. So that's, that's, that's positive. On the, on the property tax, tax base side. That's where we have struggled, and to some degree, continue to struggle, the most during the last six years, which has been the, the term of the most recent recession. This is also positive, total building permit numbers. This is by fiscal year, going back to '04, '05 through this year we just completed. This is the, '09, '10 is the anomaly in here. There's a $30 million building permit that was issued, Catawba Valley Medical Center, which isn't taxable property. So that kind of inflated this year. So basically, we had five years of building permitting activity that ran about $50 million annually. But look what happened this past year. $78 million, a 60, 62% increase over the previous year. Now, we would like for this number to be double that, in all honesty, you know, more than what we had seen during the, the real estate boom of the '06, '07, '07, '08. But we are seeing a lot of positive momentum, a lot of inquiries from an economic development perspective. And really, we have seen most of that in the last six months. A lot of that has really picked up. You can, you know, we'll see if we're on the front end of something. But the last six months, you can see it in our numbers a little bit. And again, I don't know if it'll be sustainable, but, but hopefully, we're on the front end of the recovery we've been, we've been waiting on. So that's good news. This is also good news. This is your general fund balance, your unassigned general fund balance. Think of it as your savings account in, in, in the general fund. I'll take you back to 2001. 2001 was the previous recession. And if you remember, when we came out of the 90s, I mean, the unemployment rate in the Hickory metro area was less than 2%. The city's tax base was growing 4% or 5% a year. We, to some degree, we thought we were invincible. Well, and even in 2001, we thought, well, this is going to be a blip on the screen, things will bounce, bounce back in a year or two, like the '93 recession. Well, that didn't happen. And you can see, we, staff, the city's philosophy goes, well, we're just going to ride this out a couple of years. We're not going to make a whole lot of cuts on the expenditure, on, on the expenditure side. And we really cut into our fund balance. I think we learned a lesson with the previous recession. You can see, we got down, this is, this is where your fund balance stood. This is the percentage of fund balance. You can see, we got down to 18.4%. So that doesn't give you a whole lot of flexibility when opportunities come up to spend money from your fund balance to take advantage of things. So, again, we, we learned a lesson with the previous recession that, you know, we really need to work hard on the expenditure side, because you don't know how long these, these recessions are going to last. Well, that's what we found out with the most recent downturn, which was, turned out to be six years and, and hopefully not counting, but at least six years. You can see, we did a pretty good job, and City Council made a lot of tough decisions, some very unpopular decisions, to maintain a solid fund balance through the term of that six years. And we anticipate, this is FY 14, we anticipate that we're going to hold steady. That's, obviously, we're not going to have the exact same fund balance we had the previous year. But we are saying, we're going to hold steady. Your goal is to have a 25% fund balance, which represents three months of operating expenditures. You're at about 29, you were about 29% last year. We tapped into it a little bit with the current year's budget. It'll go down a little bit. You'll be at 28, 27%, but still above your 25% mark. So we feel pretty good about the work that has been done. And again, a lot of hard decisions along, along the way here. Much of what, much of that can be attributed to your department heads, working with them on hiring freezes, you know, keeping positions vacant, delaying hiring positions. A lot of the savings that are had in the annual budget come from lapsed salaries. So we've, we've worked really hard to maintain that. We feel pretty good about that. So four good bar charts in a row. So just, just to summarize here, we have seen, I would say, modest improvement in our FY 13, 14 numbers, particularly the last six months. Hopefully, you know, we'll see if this is a trend the next six months. Maybe we'll be into a more solid recovery. That's the question that we're asking. We have the annual audit that's currently underway. We anticipate fund balance to remain at our 25%, go actually a little better than that. However, we all know, and we talked about this during the budget presentation, there's a lot of challenges coming up for the next fiscal year, two in particular. Privilege license. We're going to lose one, over $1.1 million in revenue from our privilege license in the general fund. In addition to that, the county's doing its four-year revaluation, and we're anticipating an 8% drop in values. Now, some of that may be offset by some growth that we get somewhere else. But that's the, that's not in writing, or that's not been communicated to us. But that's what we're, that's what we're planning for.
But what that means is, if you have a $100,000 property, and you're paying, the city tax is $500, is that right?
Right.
$500,000. You will then have a $92,000 property, and you'll be paying $500,000.
92% of that. Well, yeah, you raise taxes, yeah, correct. That's correct.
It, it doesn't affect, unfortunately, the tax rate will be affected.
Yes.
But the actual taxes paid by a particular homeowner or a business owner is not going to be affected by that.
And it'll, it'll vary. Some folks will see a bigger drop than others, and some may see a little bit of an increase.
Winners and losers, and so.
Yeah, yeah. And on the whole, that's, that's the right way to look at it.
On the privilege license?
Yes.
Is that how much we bring in now?
Yes. And that equates to about 2.5 cents on the property tax rate.
But we'll probably get something coming in. We just don't have any idea.
You know, that's going to be a policy decision. I, I think staff would, is leaning towards, if, if they rework the privilege license the way we think it's going to be reworked, it's probably not worth having. It's going to be a lot of hoops to jump through for not much.
Well, I think what we're, what we're hoping for, holding our breath for, is, is, you know, some, some promises that have been made verbally by the governors and other, that others, that they will take a look at figuring out, you know, that, others that they will take a look at figuring out, you know, how to provide some revenue source for the local governments that will hold us harmless in terms of the privilege license. But that's all we have at this moment. As a matter of fact, Ms. Fox was just in Raleigh today with some league meetings, and there's concern that there has not been a study bill introduced. Typically, in the past, when you kinda got these lingering issues, they'll say, okay, let's put all together an omnibus study bill, and we'll have some committees looking at it over the off-session and come back with some recommendations. That hadn't happened yet. So that gives us some concern about how seriously will they really take those verbal commitments to, to work to give the cities another option of revenue to, to hold us harmless with the privilege license. And of course, it's your bigger shopping center destination types of communities that this is a hit on. It's us in Charlotte, in Raleigh, in Greensboro, et cetera. So it's not across the board in the state of North Carolina. So then that starts becoming, well, what representatives care and what don't, and all the politics to go with that, so.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any appointments?
I've got an appointment for the Appliance Commission, Charles Hayes, 108 28th Avenue Northeast.
Any others? Good second for his motion?
Second.
Second by Seaver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. General comments. Well, interestingly, based on the presentation that Dr. Miles made, I was in DC this weekend, visiting my son, in a multi-use neighborhood. The, Mr. Crone's son just started work in DC. My son lives on the third floor of a multi-use building, and, and on the first floor is a 7-Eleven. Next to the 7-Eleven is a Verizon store. And then down the street, there's an entire city block that's a shopping mall with Target and Best Buy and a number of other large names. That area is considered a success story because they have, in addition to the mixed use, they have greatly changed the proportion of low-income to-